Why don't you stand up, uh, Jerry Delgarciello. And if you can stand up and, uh, just, just, um...
Should we open the meeting up first?
No, no, because technically we're not members until we get sworn in. You should get sworn in anywhere. I, and then say your, obviously say your name. We solemn swear. I, Antonio Jerry Delgarciello, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in the state under the authority of the people. I, Antonio Jerry Delgarciello, affirm to solemnly swear that I will faithfully and partially and justly perform all the duties of the Board of Adjustment according to the best of my ability, so help me God. Congratulations. Son, son, I go, we're gonna graduate. I gotta sign him. And then she's gonna sign. Now you gotta go for the chamber. No, he has opened, well, no, I, I opened the meeting. I opened the meeting. Okay. Once we get, once we get going. Okay. The regular meeting of the Valvoline Board of Adjustment for July tenth, two thousand and nineteen will now come to order. Clerk call to roll.
Bennett, here. Caruso. Giordano. Lopez. Lozal, here. Catalino, here. Sheldon. Valano. Delgarciello.
Madam Secretary, have noticed if this meeting been given according to Sunshine Law?
Certification of meaning has been advertised according to Sunshine Law.
Okay. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, you don't want that, we have to do first anyway, um, if you want. Or we can do the minutes first, which we, I think it can be organized. All right. If you want to do the reorganization. To, to reorganize, um, the first order of business will be nomination for chairman of the board for the next twelve months.
I nominate that.
Second, any other nominations, seeing none, hearing none? Vote for Mr. Beattilio for chairman. Delgarciello. Mr. Ado. Mr. Beattilio. My first. Jerry Delgarciello for chairman. Clerk call to roll.
Bennett, yes. Caruso. Giordano. Lopez. Lozal, yes. Catalino. Sheldon. Valano. Delgarciello.
Maybe I should have abstained, anyway. Uh, nominations for vice chairman, I want to, oh, Giordano.
I nominate Willie Valano.
Okay. Seconded by Mr. Caruso. Any other nominations for vice president? Okay, clerk call to roll.
Bennett, yes. Caruso. Giordano. Lozal, yes. Catalino. Sheldon. Delgarciello.
Yes. Now I wanna open up nominations for the board attorney.
Nominate Willie Valano.
Nominated by Mr. Valano, seconded by Ms. Lozal. Any other nominations for the attorney? Seeing none, clerk call to roll, please.
Bennett, yes. Caruso. Giordano. Lozal, yes. Catalino. Sheldon. Valano. Delgarciello.
Okay, next thing is our secretary.
Well, we say thank you. I nominate Gina Chigarelli.
Gina Chigarelli nominated by Mr. Giordano, seconded by Mr. Caruso. Any other nominations for secretary? Seeing none, clerk call to roll, please.
Bennett, yes. Caruso. Giordano. Lozal, yes. Catalino. Sheldon. Valano, yes. Delgarciello. Thank you.
You're welcome. Nominations for our engineer. And planner, engineer slash planner.
I nominate Valano.
Nominated by Mr. Valano, seconded by Ms. Lozal. Any other nominations? Seeing none, clerk call to roll.
Bennett, yes. Caruso. Giordano. Lozal, yes. Catalino. Sheldon. Valano. Delgarciello.
Yes. Court report, yes.
I nominate Michelle Court.
Okay, nominated by Mr. Valano. I'll second that nomination. Any other nominations? Seeing none. Clerk call to roll.
Bennett, yes. Caruso. Giordano. Lozal, yes. Catalino. Sheldon. Valano. Delgarciello.
They always put up seven votes. Okay, uh, am I right? Gina, all of these don't count, do they? Okay. Uh, I wanna make notice that Mr. Lopez has now come. Pre-attendance. Mr. Lopez has now come before the case is started. So that way it's on the record. Okay. Anything with the minutes?
What, the motion to a court?
No changes. Okay, motion made by Mr. Valano, do I get a second? Seconded by Mr. Caruso. Clerk call to roll.
Bennett, yes. Caruso. Giordano. Lopez. Lozal, yes. Catalino. Sheldon. Valano. Delgarciello.
Yes. Okay. Uh, let's see what we're doing here. Resolutions to be memorialized, we'll do that last. Let's get on to the main business. Applications for adjournment, do I have any applications for adjournment? Yes, sir, come on up.
Good evening, Spencer Raffel of Los Joaquin Leaden. On behalf of, uh, the applicant Riverside Gardens, four seventeen, four fifty-seven Main Street, number two on the, and, uh... We respectfully request the board grant me adjournment of this application. It's a matter that was carried from last month. There's gonna be four witnesses, it's a rather complex matter. And my office consulted with Mr. Chigarelli, and we respectfully request the special meeting passed for on August.
You want a special meeting for this?
Yes, we, we had consulted with...
What's wrong with August first, that's our next meeting. That's, that's, you can't get earlier than that.
We're gonna have six on.
We're gonna have what?
We'll be having six cases.
Six cases. He's the next one on the agenda, that's my point. You said he's, we're having six cases, he's the next one on the agenda after the church.
Church, church is gonna continue from tonight or is it gonna be...
Mr. Gassillon, what's, what's the situation you wanna do with, with, uh...
Well, just in deference to counsel's here, I'll tell you what my position is, and he may disagree. So, I have an issue with my planner as to whether or not he's making it tonight, or whether or not he can make August first, and I therefore am going to request a special meeting date. I had the opportunity to talk to the board secretary, she indicated that maybe the date of July twenty-five, I believe, could be available for a special meeting date.
What date is that? What week, pardon, weekend?
Thursday.
Thursday. Yeah, yeah, I, I... Does anybody have a problem? The twenty-fifth? You won't be here the twenty-fifth.
Well, but I'll, I'll, we finish and then see if you object then.
Okay.
Now, the, uh, attorney who started this case has been unable to make the last meeting or tonight's meeting, and he can make August first, but he cannot make the twenty-fifth. So my request is subject to agreeing in advance, if it's acceptable to counsel, that summation would not take place if the case were to be finished on the twenty-fifth. Summation would not take place till the first, so the counsel or the, uh, neighbor could be here himself.
Adam Fiallo, I'm still at Combs and Gross, uh, for, on behalf of Rutgers Court Association. Um, I'm waiting confirmation to see if that is, uh, fine. I do, may request, though, that we put our, we're going to have a planner that we're putting on. Um, we may want to save that until August first. But finishing up your direct case shouldn't be an issue with the special meeting. I just need to wait for confirmation, um, from the partner who's, uh, started this case that it would be okay, whether or not we should wait for our case on August first in addition to the summations, or if we can put on our case on the special meeting and then the summations on August first.
Obviously, that, I'm not happy with that, because if I'm going to have a special meeting, it's only gonna be possibly one witness, and that would be Mr. Steck, and I wouldn't expect him to take the whole night. So we've gotta pay for a special meeting. I don't want it to be just that. And I understand what counsel's position is, he's here on behalf of his partner.
Let me ask you a question, let's maybe make a deal. If this gentleman wants to have a special meeting, do you have a problem with the twenty-fifth of this month?
I don't believe so, I can check with the witnesses.
I'm saying, Mr. Gassillon, since you're only gonna have one witness, you wanna share it.
That's fine with me. That would be probably acceptable to counsel, acceptable to me.
I believe that should be fine.
Now, you're prepared, you're gonna be going ahead tonight with it, church?
I'm going ahead tonight, correct?
And you're prepared to...
Just so, it just wants to say...
Hold on, hold on.
My concern tonight is whether or not Mr. Steck is getting here. That's the reason I'm looking for the twenty-fifth as a part that I'd be happy to share, because I don't expect that we're gonna take more than that to finish my case. That I've got a recall, Beth Cantadon with regard to changes that were submitted on the twenty-sixth, and then the architect has a different. That's it. Assuming Mr. Steck does not make it, and I have reasonably, he won't make it, he's tied up someplace else.
You mean tonight?
Tonight.
So my, my point is to try and make it easier for you, and make him happy too, which can't get happier than this. Technically, do you wanna handle this? Now, we have one member who's not gonna be here, you have a problem with that. But we still have an alternate. Gabby, you're not gonna be here either? On the twenty-fifth? Oh, we got a problem. Rich is not sitting on it.
I'm not, I'm not sitting.
So we're already short one. So three are not gonna be here.
I don't care, 'cause I'm gonna, we're gonna finish up on August first. I just wanna continue and get Steck's testimony.
Yeah, I understand that, but then you're gonna have to, um, wait. Well, yeah, you could be, you gotta remember, you're looking for five votes, five yes votes. Am I correct?
I do remember that.
Yes, very good. And we're only gonna have six people, six people hearing the case on the twenty-fifth.
But then they, they couldn't listen to the...
Yes, they could, but you would, you would have to trade, trade a transcript, right, if you wanna do that. Because this might be very lengthy, knowing how this case is going, that's my point.
Hopefully not, so I'm gonna, I turn a lot of this.
And Mr. Giordano, I think you will be here the twenty-fifth? If we're gonna have a special meeting for this other gentleman, so... You won't be here the twenty-fifth either?
I'm on vacation.
You're on vacation. So, well, let me ask, is this a de-application for the, uh, for the Main Street case?
I believe there is a use variance.
It's a use, so if it's a use variance, you're gonna need five yes votes.
Right, but nobody's heard testimony yet, so we have alternates.
Unless you wanna hold off on the vote, and then you, they would have to listen to your case.
Nobody's heard testimony yet. If somebody, the alternates are here, what's, it's, what's the point? What's the problem? No, no, there's no testimony yet, it's...
We only have two alternates.
Right, and...
He's not gonna be here. She's not gonna be here, and he's not gonna be here. We only have two alternates.
That leaves six.
That leaves six, and he needs five yes votes. You understand where I'm coming from?
Yeah, but they put the case in. And I understand if they wanna call for a vote, six, they'll...
Whatever you wanna do is okay with me.
If, if possible, one of the August, uh, special dates that we had discussed with Mr. Chigarelli...
Well, that doesn't mean we were gonna have a special day yet in August. You know, and I don't even know if the clerk has looked up the dates in August, have you?
Yes, I did.
You did, okay, what dates are available in August?
Five, twenty, the fifth, the twentieth, the twenty-second.
Fifth, twentieth, and twenty-second.
Twenty-second or twenty-seventh?
Twenty-second and twenty-seventh, yeah. No, 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 sorry, wait a minute. The fifth, the twentieth, the twenty-second, and twenty-seventh.
So you said you, you have a problem with the fifth?
The fif, I'm good for the twentieth and the twenty-second. That, that week, I'm okay. Twenty-seventh is not...
Twenty-seventh is a problem.
Fifth and the twenty-seventh, I'm, I'm okay for the twentieth and the twenty-second. The best midterm on...
Let me look at my calendar.
That would be for Riverside.
Yes, that's Riverside Gardens.
That's Riverside, and if Mr. Gassillon wants to jump in, he can.
Is that a town meeting that night?
No, there's only one town meeting that night. Available the twentieth.
Twenty-second, twenty-second, and twenty-seventh.
The twentieth, the twentieth you'll be available. Gabby, you'll be available. Okay, so everybody, everybody has a problem with the twentieth?
I'm fine.
Okay. The twenty, what was the other one, the twenty-one?
The twenty-second.
The twenty-second, you're not available, correct?
Correct.
You won't be here on the twenty-second. Anybody else missing for the twenty-second?
That's a Tuesday.
That's a Thursday.
Twenty-second, Thursday.
Twenty-eighth. So I think we're looking for the twentieth.
I, I can check with, um, your...
I'm gonna check with Steck.
Just in case he's wanna have a, now, you gotta remember that, we're talking about the twentieth of August.
Yeah.
Just in case you guys wanna extend it to that. So, Mr. Gassillon, do you wanna eliminate July and make it two meetings in August? You wanna do it that way?
Uh, I, I need to, I'm just trying to get Mr. Steck, that's my issue.
Whatever you say. Whatever you say. If, if you wanna wait and we can take another case, I'll do that too. Tonight I'm talking about, well, there, what are you talking about?
There's no cases to take, they're my cases.
Oh, they're all yours.
No, after this gentleman adjourns them.
Oh, you got them, you got them...
I have one ready, but I gotta call him, I never expected it to be...
You said August twentieth? August twentieth, we'll talk, see if he's available. Let's find out what Bob wants to hear. I'll go along with Bob.
That one, that's very nice, you go part of the short... Not anyone's... Would you like to have a ten-minute recess while you guys will go through this? It's okay with me. No, it's okay with me, because that way anybody who don't do anything to do it...
Mr. Chairman, uh, while we're waiting, uh, can we talk about some board business for a minute?
Yeah, sure, I don't care. You mean, you mean in public or private?
In the public, uh...
Go ahead. Oh, yeah, we can do the resolution, memorialize that, we can do those. Go ahead.
In the spirit of, uh, streamlining, we had talked about once before of, uh, those of us that could accept our application documents via email. I understand that not everyone is, you know, monster or is capable of doing it. But for those that are capable, I think it would be prudent and cheaper if we, like, for myself, I'll speak for me, I wanna speak for everybody, okay. If I can get my documents emailed to me, in the ideal form of experience, some, uh, occupants run zip files for their, their drawings, or send that to me, and one of the resolutions can, I guess, our secretary can scan and stuff, and send it to me, rather than need huge packages and a waste of paper that we are doing. It's the, I'm just saying, it's, I'm not saying that everybody would be able to accommodate, but I think if there's nine people here, I bet you seven can. So I'm just asking something to think about and make that, uh, something that, if you don't want it and you want the hard copy, that's your business. I think it's, it's time that we start making...
I, I work for boards that do exactly that. If half the board wants it that way, they get it, and the other half wants it mailed, then...
And if, if I, I'm not, and, and where I was thinking of, uh, is that we would ask our board secretary, so if you email it to somebody, right, she would have a receipt request, uh, you know, you would get a receipt that she couldn't get back, that we received it, and she would make a file for that meeting, and put all those receipts in that file, knowing that anybody got it. The reason why I'm saying is, that's the way things are going, and I, I do understand that not everybody is either willing or equipped. Some people, to be fair, are not, those computers are not cheap. But, you know, myself, I have my own laptop, I, I would prefer email to...
You're not really interrupting, what I was gonna ask, basically, was, is the laptop... Isn't that the way to do it, so you can see it in the, in the size, that's what I'm saying. See, I don't have a laptop, that's why I have a...
Yeah, my, my laptop is, turns into a tablet, the whole idea. Yeah, I realize that everyone has one. And for those who don't have one or don't want the expense of that, fine. And I think, if I look at this board, I know quite a few of you. I would say the majority have the capability of doing that. And I think we're to confirm, get rid of some of the, some of the paper, and save the money.
You can do that, Gina? All right, so I'll ask the board if, if I, I want a hard copy, because I don't have a, what do you, I don't have...
Well, I'm gonna speak for mine. So, can we just, so let's, let's go down.
Yes, we can go down, starting with you, and we'll go to Mr. Giordano, how he wants to handle this.
For me, personally, email thing.
Mr. Giordano.
Email, of course, I just would like to just, uh, a continuation of what Mr. Valano was saying. Uh, the Board of Ed has been using Word docs, we've, we've gone digital with all of our documents since the beginning of two thousand and eighteen. It's increased efficiency tremendously, it's cut expenses, we've no longer wasted a forest of trees for every, every board meeting. The other benefit of using, uh, digital is that, uh, when members of the public ask for copies of documents, Gina will be able to email members of the public the plans, the, the applications, so that would hopefully take the stress off of her, she would...
Well, that, that brings us to my next question.
That's a very good idea.
My next one, my next question. Gina, the only thing I would ask you is, and I know that a lot of companies or engineering firms, I would ask you to request it from them, uh, one, one hard copy. One, well, whatever firm it is, a hard copy.
Yeah, we would just put it on the application, Gabby.
Okay, great, yeah, that's, that's fine. So we can get a zip file, whatever it is.
Well, and that way, and that way you could send, you send their members of the public that wish to have...
Yeah, that's up to them.
Well, well, uh... Have to Oprah, you know, will they have to Oprah?
Yeah.
No, I don't think they would have to Oprah, because they're allowed to review any documents ten days before the meeting. Here's what I understand, if they, if they do an Oprah, if there's so many days. Since we have to provide it to them ten days before.
Ten days.
Ten days.
Oprah's, uh, ten days.
Ten, Oprah request takes ten days.
Ten days.
Okay, but we have to have it available to them ten days before the meeting. So since we have to have it available for them ten days before the meeting, then it can't be done by Oprah. But I understand if it's done by Oprah, they can't, the, the town can't charge per page either.
But, yeah, there's certain things you can give out on Oprah too, uh...
What do you mean?
Because of the nine eleven stuff.
Well, certain, yeah, certain security...
Certain security things, foreplay, and stuff like that, you gotta be careful, yeah.
I think I'm talking about basic...
We're talking about basic applications.
Like, if we had an application with a bank with security systems, that might be, you know, and we're seeing it on the plans, that might be...
Frank, let me ask you a question. A company, a person comes in, and they want copies of the plans, such as an attorney. The question is, do they have a right to get copies of the plans?
No, are they the owner, or just that, it's...
No, I'm just saying, somebody who, who wants to, has an interest in the case.
No, we let them look at it. They wanna Oprah it, then they Oprah it, and...
And then they get the copies.
Yeah, yeah.
Oprah. Said, go Oprah.
I'm just saying, I don't wanna have a problem with this ten-day issue.
No, we always have the hard copies.
Right, you have the hard copies, not like they can't see it.
Yeah, but here's the reason I'm saying this. And, and you're, and, and I understand where you're coming from. The reason I'm saying this is sometimes attorneys do not get supplemental stuff in up until maybe twelve days, or even the, the day before, it's ten days.
They get it, they get it from the other, like, the, like, Bobby, you would get it from Bobby. It's not us that. If he needs not to get it from the attorney, who get it from Bobby, by surprise?
I understand that, let's take a person like Mr. Fran Antoni, loves to Oprah everything. Okay? He has ten, but he's gotta do ten days, and what happens if it, if a, if an attorney submits something ten, a day before the ten days that has to be there? So he don't have time to Oprah.
I think you're getting it in the weeds, myself. That's our legal counsel, to get that straight. I wanna, I wanna just, I wanna address an issue right here. I would likely get my stuff.
Now we settled, now we already settled. Now we're talking about the public, that's a different thing.
As long as it's here ten days before. Remember, the public wants to come in two days and look at it, that's up to them, it's be here ten days. If there's something else submitted in the interim, we can still receive it, but a member of the public would probably say, you got this traffic report yesterday, so it was, I haven't had a chance to, to bring my witness up to speed. So, we proceed probably, but, but hold on.
Okay, whichever way you want to do it. Suppose it's legal.
That's my answer.
Now, before we were gonna do, excuse me, the memorialization, uh, I don't even want you to talk yet. Mr. Lopez, he's in the hallway, you must stay in here. Because if Mr. Gassillon's gonna talk, you've gotta hear him. Mr. Gassillon, you wanted to say something?
Well, counsel, I have thought neither of us have been able to reach the welcome party in his partner and me, Peter Steck. So what we thought about doing at the moment is proceeding, and we may be forced to then just adjourn whatever we finished tonight to the next regularly scheduled meeting, and then at that point, either continue, if somehow Steck can make it, or then ask for a special meeting to finish my case and then do this case.
So we're not gonna have a special meeting then on the twenty-fifth?
Doesn't look that way at the moment.
Okay, no meeting on the twenty-fifth, this one, I'm talking about this one.
Just so you, just so I explain why. Steck can't make the twenty-fifth, so he would be my next witness.
Mr. Gassillon, don't get me wrong, I have no problem with that, I just wanna know what meeting we're considering to have a special meeting, if it's July or if it's August.
It's August.
So if we're talking about August, then you can also be part of that special meeting, if Mr. Gassillon has no problem with that.
Right, so we would be here on August first, and...
At that time you'll decide what is gonna have a special...
It'll give us some time to figure out what...
Okay, and that way, that way you don't have to ask for it immediately, or pay for it immediately. On August first, all the decision will be made.
And he's gonna, yeah, he's gonna ask for it.
Oh, you don't wanna do it on the first?
If, if possible, um, scheduling, um, for a separate night in August, it's a possibility.
We potentially join his special meetings.
The twenty, the twenty, the twenty-fifth of this month is out. And the reason it's out is members are not gonna be here. So to have a case on the twenty-fifth without, with only six members is ridiculous, okay? So this month is out. If you wanna have the special meeting in August and share it with him, I got no problem in the event he don't get done on the first. But if he gets done on the first, or he, or he, let's say he cuts the first short, But if he gets done on the 1st, or he, or he, let's say he cuts the 1st short, you could start your case on the 1st. And maybe even get it done on the 1st. But you said you can't do it the 1st.
No, I, I believe that, I have to check with the witnesses, but I believe they may be able to make the first, so.
Alright, so why don't we do this? No final decision, on the special meeting is gonna be done to the 1st. So why don't you just come back the 1st, and we'll see what we do. In the meantime, I assume you're adjourning tonight?
Yes, correct.
But we need to carry it to the 1st, so you can have a.
We are doing that, there's not gonna be no special meeting this month.
To the 1st, right. So our application will be carried to 7:00 PM on the 1st of August, without any further notice?
Yes, for anybody in the audience, ZB 2019-05, 417, 457 Main Street, Riverside Gardens. Uh, applicant is seeking approval for their 44 units to be adjusted to 47 units at the set property. There will be no further notice, either in the mail or in the newspaper. And, uh, that is adjourned to Thursday, August 1st. Right, it is on the 1st. So, that's one case is done. Now the goal, Mr. Gassillon, and since all the rest of the cases are his, he could adjourn whatever he wants adjourned.
I'd like to leave ZB 2019-08 on for the moment, in case there's a chance it gets reached tonight.
It's Castle?
Yes.
But you wanna adjourn the other two?
I absolutely wanna adjourn the other two.
Alright, so that's number four, number five on the agenda, 219-09 and 219-10, correct?
They clearly will not get reached tonight.
Okay, so anyone in the audience who was here for ZB 2019-09, 49, 45, Watchung Avenue, DMP Realty LLC. Applicant is seeking approval to construct a multifamily residential apartment building with six two-bedroom dwellings on vacant land. And number five on the agenda, ZB 2019-10, 114 Cortlandt Street, ATN Solutions LLC. Applicant is seeking approval to demolish the existing single-family dwelling and construct a new single-family dwelling. Okay, both of those cases are adjourned to August 1st, 2019. There'll be no further notices in the newspaper or by mail, okay? So, Mr. Gassillon, now that we got through all this, now we may proceed with the case at hand and continue. ZB 2019-02, 125 Academy Street, St. Mary's, St. Macrisius Church.
Counselor, who are your name, please, for the record, as for the, uh, for the.
Adam Aiella, that's Ephesian Frank, A-I-E-L-L-A, from the law firm of Sills, Commiss, and Gross.
Are you related to Alan?
Yes, that's my father, the one from Newark, not Union County.
Yes, they have.
Oh, his chair, I thought, I didn't wanna talk to you. Now you have a couple of chairs to sit on. Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Gassillon, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as you know, counsel's name is Robert Gassillon, firm is Gassillon, from Akko 524 Union Avenue in Belleville. At the last hearing, the board decided, after testimony by Peter Steck, that Ray Judicotta did not apply, and we then proceeded with the application. You heard from Father Luke, from St. Mark and St. Ferrer's Church, and the site engineer, Beth Kenderdine. Kenderdine, during the course of the engineering testimony, board members, including the board chair, expressed concerns about the parking layout. As a result of saying, there were some changes made to the site plan, which changes were submitted to the board on June 26th. This evening, I plan to recall the site engineer to testify about those changes. Following Ms. Kenderdine will be Ammon Sedra, the architect, who will describe the existing structure, review what is being demolished, and discuss the proposed new structure. My hope is that the final witness will be Mr. Steck, but as I made clear to the board, he is at another location and may not make it. I'd like to call my first witness, Beth Kenderdine.
Ms. Kenderdine, you were sworn at the June 6th meeting, and please consider yourself still in the road. If you could just state your name, spell your last name for the record.
Uh, Beth Kenderdine, K-E-N-B-E-R-D-I-N-E.
And I'm assuming that you're still a licensed civil engineer, there have been no issues?
Yes, in the last month, yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Kenderdine, during the last meeting, were you present with regard to comments made by board members, including the chairman?
Yes.
As a result of those comments, did you then make certain changes to the plan with regard to the parking?
I did.
And can you please review with the board specifically those changes that were made, and only those changes?
Yes.
Are these the plans the board has, its exact plans?
Yes, I have colored up the site plan and the landscaping plan, which I can mark as.
Yeah, I think we're up to A5. One should be marked A5, it tells which one that is, and the other A6.
Uh, A5 will be sheet C3.0, that is the site layout plan dated June 20th, 2019. Um, A6 will be sheet C7.0, that is the landscaping and lighting plan dated June 20th, 2019. Um, and I brought along the colored, uh, plans from our last plan set, since they were marked as exhibits, I didn't know if they needed to be kept on file. Um, so the changes that we made, you can do this. Um, essentially what we did was, uh, change the plan to get better circulation through the parking garage and through the surface parking lot. So, we've added one-way drive aisles into both the lower and the upper parking garages, so that a car can circulate through if the, if the garage is full. And we've added another two-way driveway off Academy Street to the surface parking lot. So again, cars will access off Academy Street, and they can, uh, exit back onto Academy Street. So the rear parking, or the rear driveway of Rutgers will be used for emergency access-only authorized vehicles. I have a sign up, or I propose a sign up at the back of the building, essentially stating no outlet, no access to unauthorized vehicles. Um, as a result of those two changes, the parking calculations have been updated.
Are they increased?
No. Slightly decreased. So in the parking garage, we lost, um, two parking stalls, no, four parking stalls. The, um, eastern parking lot, we maintained 33 stalls, so the total provided is 105 stalls, compared to a required 103.
Going backwards, if you would, did you change the ADA ramp from the parking lot to the front entrance of the church?
I did. So because of the elevation change, adding this driveway meant that the, the whole parking lot had to be lowered. Um, so as a result of that, I added, uh, an ADA, a concrete ADA ramp to get up to the front door of the building. Um, and also, I added a, uh, right, I updated this form order management system to reflect the increase in impervious coverage due to the, uh, new driveway off the surface parking lot. Um, and then finally, on sheet.
Can I ask you a question?
Of course.
The parking layout in the, in the other driveway, or in the other lot, the open lot, is that on here?
On here?
Yes.
It's on sheet C3.0?
Eight, eight point zero?
C3.0.
C point zero.
No, it won't be shown on the article. Sheet 3.0.
Did you locate that, Mr. Chief?
Yes, I'm looking, I'm just trying to get the thing open so I can see it, it's so big. Okay, now we're okay, alright, go ahead.
Um, and then I, I just wanna point out one last thing on sheet C6.0. I did add a turning template for a large school bus that can pull onto the site and maneuver around in the parking area and get back out onto Academy Street.
That would be in the open parking lot?
That's in the, that's in the surface parking area, yes.
Now, I have no further, that could come in from either way, or, or it has to come in from the back, back way?
It comes in off Academy Street.
It comes in off Academy and leaves off Academy.
And leaves off Academy.
Okay, very good.
No further questions of this witness, and all she was on for tonight was to review the changes, as her testimony had been completed. But we put changes in, and she testified to those.
Very good. Uh, any members of board have questions on the witness, based upon the testimony?
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Good evening, uh, just so that I am clear on the bus situation, all of the bus traffic for the church would be coming in off of Academy and exiting onto Academy, there would be no bus traffic? Even though you have a turning template that would allow buses, I guess, to go in through Rutgers Court, there wouldn't be any?
No, no, there's no turning template, the, the bus would not be able to get through Rutgers Court.
So all, all the bus traffic is coming in off of Academy?
Correct.
Well, what is the, what is the grade for that entrance off of Academy Street?
Um, I graded it at 12% at the steepest point. Um, what I did was, I'm gonna go back to the site there for a second. What I did was, um, essentially it did a, at the 2% slope where the, where the crosswalk is, and then I, and then I increased the pitch to a maximum of 12%, and then flattened it out where I have, um, a crosswalk for the ADA parking stalls.
That's a permissible grade, a 12%, so that's not gonna cause any, any safety concerns?
It should not. No, that's, um, what the other two driveways are, are pitched at as well.
Uh, you may remember at the last hearing, I asked you if you could give us some idea of the net change in on-street parking as a result of, now you added this extra entrance, so do you have that number at hand, how many net spaces are either being gained or lost in the process of this application?
Well, I have a typo on my cover sheet, but it's a loss of four parking stalls along Academy Street.
Now, let me ask you a question also. Since you can get the bus in from Academy now, does that also mean you can get a fire engine?
I believe so, yes. Although the, the, the pitch may be a little bit difficult, and, and they're, they're pretty close to the building here, so I don't know.
So how much did the pitch go down?
The pitch can go, wow.
No, I mean, how much did it go down from the last time, because it did be lowered, you said?
Well, no, the last time, there was no driveway here, so this whole end of the parking lot was, was pretty high off the street.
I'm thinking of the old application, okay.
Um, so I don't, I don't wanna speak out of turn and say that a, that a fire truck could definitely make it. I, I think they could. Um, we'll certainly work with the fire officials.
Okay. Then I suggest that they, they, they consult.
I think that's.
Again, I don't mean, that's why I don't mean, if you talk to chief, that you'll find.
Deputy Chief is.
Deputy Chief, sorry, I promoted. Deputy Chief, I think you'll find that, uh, the fire will be forced from the street, not from the.
That's me, we're just talking.
Oh, I was gonna ask, that's all.
Right, the fire engine, if it becomes that close to the building, it becomes an expensive exposure.
Right.
Do you think there would be a problem on Academy, because of the nature of the way dips with the, with the ladder? Because we're gonna have a tall building, that's why I'm asking.
I don't know exactly if it's you there, but.
Excuse me, use your mics?
I, I, yeah, I can't hear you either.
You can set your, you can set the outriggers on the ladder truck, and you can, uh, level the vehicle, and, and it's all automatic. You know, it lights up and tells you it's safe to raise it. But it's all hydraulic, and it's pretty powerful, so. She may be able to raise it and level it.
Any other questions, my members of the board, Mr.?
There was an interesting question at the last meeting about fire truck access, but in particular, I, I believe the question may have been asked by Mr. Fran Antoni. He was, he wanted to know if a fire truck had to extend its outriggers on Academy Street, since it is a very, very narrow street with parking aside, did there ever be an issue with the outriggers for the fire truck being properly extended, especially now with added building height? Could, would there, could there be an impediment, that the, the fire truck could not safely extend its base, and then the risk of.
Try and set it up in a spot where you'd have enough room. Like, if you cross any driveway, there wouldn't be a car parked there, so that gives you that much more room to have another, what, 10 feet or whatever to set your outriggers out there.
What do you have to, put four out, to one side?
Yeah, usually.
How, when you do extend it, how far out does it go?
It's, if the truck's a D1, it really doesn't have a really wide footprint, I don't know exactly what it was, but it sets up in a small space.
We can't hear out here.
Talk in your mic.
Good, Mr. Fran Antoni, move up, sit up, so we can hear you.
We got microphones right there, where is yours, and her?
Come on, it's my first time in the seat, man.
You know, just move up to.
You guys.
The ladder, the ladder truck.
There's a whole row there that's empty, two rows up. So move up if you can't hear.
Open the mic, we can hear.
Ma'am, there's no reason you have to sit back there, you can sit up here.
No, the reason I have to sit back here is so I can look at everything. I don't like people behind me. So I like to see the whole picture, Jeremy. So you got microphones, they're working tonight, use them.
This is not the Old West where you have to worry about your back. Not the Congress.
I mean, you're supposed to be professionals up there. We went to my four-year-old granddaughter's recital together, they, they four-year-old know how to use a microphone.
Alright. Well, if you don't hear, it's your own fault. That's all I'm gonna say. Go ahead. Anybody else have questions?
Yeah, one more question. Uh, can we make as a condition that all bus activity would have to be done inside the, the ground parking lot? That you wouldn't be able to, to do any bus activity on the street?
I agree with that a thousand percent. So that would be, anybody else have a problem with that?
My, my client has no objection.
I would like for her to get to her testimony, that would be great.
She got to her testimony, this question came up as part of her testimony. We're asking questions based on the testimony. Okay, any other questions, based on the testimony? Any members in the public wish to ask questions, based on?
The attorney.
The attorney, yes, you could ask questions first.
Just basically, Adam, on the, on the scope of what Ms. Kenderdine discussed tonight, or testified to tonight, the changes.
Sir, um, Ms. Kenderdine, you said there was an increase in the impervious coverage?
Slight increase, yes.
And so is that a larger variance than what was discussed before?
Uh, yes.
Okay, and, um, I noticed on the driveway, the new driveway off of Academy, the last parking space is less than 10 feet away from the driveway, uh, well, from where the driveway goes into. The last parking space, um, on the left side. No, the street, the.
What you pointed out there?
Yeah, this parking space right here, is very close to the, um, to where the driveway is, and where people are going to be entering and, um, exiting. Is there, are there going to be any issues with that car pulling out if somebody's pulling in?
I don't believe so, they'll have to wait.
Um, is there anything that's in between that space and the driveway?
This is grass.
Grass, okay.
Or, wait, I think it's actually land, not specifically grass.
Okay, and you said that there was a loss of four spaces in the garage?
Yes.
Were there, uh, there was a loss of, were there any losses of spaces in the outdoor parking?
No.
And you said that total is 105 spaces now?
Correct.
And the requirement is 103?
Correct.
And was that based on the houses of worship category for everything, for the seating area, the houses of worship? Okay, so it wasn't based on any other uses, only using house of worship?
Yes, I testified to that at the last meeting.
I just wanna clarify, only because it brought up now again with the change to parking spaces. Um, and you used, just to clarify, you used the seating area space that was given by the architect?
Objection, obviously, I have a witness who's a planner who testified as to all the variances. Ms. Kenderdine was just testifying as to the changes made to the plan, she did not testify as to zoning regulations.
That's which is an architect.
Yes, and the park, number of parking spaces were reduced, and I just wanna clarify the, how the required parking spaces were calculated from the engineering standpoint.
Well, I'll tell you, wait a minute, before we go further, Mr. Haritz, will you stand? And will Mr. uh, uh.
DeLorenzo.
DeLorenzo, stand, please, I just swear.
Tell him if you could, if you raise your hand with regard to this matter, if you swear your testimony, I'm gonna show you the truth. If you swear your last meeting, it doesn't hurt.
Doesn't, no, it never hurts. The whole question is, they also made a report, so can, Mr. Haritz, explain how the. The whole question is, they also made a report, so can Mr. Haritz explain how the, how the parking, the amount of parking spaces needed was calculated, please?
Based on house of worship, uh, one, one space per 60 square feet in the seating area. That was it.
So it was the Haritz building plus that building?
It's based on the youth center and the house of worship.
And the youth center was considered house of worship?
Yes.
Well, it's in, it's in the complex.
I'll save my questions for the architect when we go through the floor parking.
Okay.
Thank you, that's, um, those are, I have no further questions.
So there, there was, I want to make this clear, there was no building area that no parking spaces were calculated before, am I correct?
Well, I don't, I.
I'm asking you one question.
I believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just clarify that statement? It was based on seating area, correct, from the house of, from the youth center too?
Yes.
Seating area, not building area.
Yes.
And is that a requirement of the ordinance or, or does it require gross area?
One space per 60 square feet, one space per 60.
For houses of worship, for other uses of, if it's.
So you said one space per 60 square feet, correct? 60?
Yes.
Okay, and the 60 was the complete area of the building?
That's the seating area, then you multiply by the square footage of the area.
Okay, but what I'm saying to you is, it's satisfying what was required in the ordinance, that's my question.
Based on house of worship, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, I'll save no further questions on that, I have no further questions for, for Mr. Kendredine.
Any member of the public have questions of this witness based upon testimony, come on up, sir, because we're on video. And there's also a speaker here, so Mr. Frant and Tony.
Hi, my name is Alex Gaspary, 144.
Sir, sir, you gotta speak into the mic, please.
My name is Alex Gaspary, 144 Academy Street. Testing, testing. Make no any difference.
Yeah, the red light's on.
Hello.
Now it works, okay, now we're perfect.
Alex Gaspary, 144 Academy Street. With respect to the new driveway, can you show me where everything? In relation to the existing houses.
I have checked, obviously, that's not in evidence for security. Sir, sir, it's on, on the map, show them on the map.
The new driveway is not in front of any existing houses, the new driveway is.
These are the houses you're gonna be tearing down, and this is the street, I'm asking where in front of the houses that would be tearing down, where would that driveway?
Objection. Wait, 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 wait. Do me a favor, just show them where the driveways are on the map, okay? Because we do not have houses on top of the driveway, just some proposed.
I know, but you have the street, I'm just asking along that curb, along that curb from the three houses from beginning to end.
Put it this way, the curb cut, starting from the end of the top property, that would, that's gonna be demolished, all the way on the left.
Right, starting at 144.
Okay, just say how far in from that property line is the first curb cut.
They go get my scale.
Sure.
Um, the first curb cut is about 23 feet from the property line. Uh, the next one is about 105 feet from the property line. And the third one, hold on, under the microscope. About 250 feet from the property line.
When you say property line?
The property line is the end of the top house on the hill.
It's right about here.
Please don't use the picture.
Sorry.
Okay, because the picture's not part of the evidence, that's the only reason.
And then my other question is for the fire.
No, you can't ask the fire, the board member, you can ask, you can give testimony at the end. And maybe we can get into a, a question that maybe one of us can answer and one of us can't, or more experts can.
The outriggers on the fire truck, would they be able to fit?
This question already came up.
Yeah, but I didn't get a clear answer.
Well, we may have somebody from the fire department come here to give testimony.
Oh, you may have, may have.
Why have to request it from the fire chief?
Okay, please, all right, that's all.
All right, anyone else have questions of the witness based upon testimony, any further questions from the board members?
I, yes, you're, you're going to make a formal request to the fire department to testify about the outrigger situation for the, their trucks. Can, can we also make a formal request of the Belville Police Department? I'd like to see the incident's report for Academy Street for the last several years, just to see, so I have the evidence at hand of, of what.
I, I could, I could ask the police chief to have somebody come and testify and bring those records.
I would appreciate that if we could.
But I haven't been able to do anything because I didn't get sworn in again until tonight.
Thank you.
But I had planned to do this already.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions by members of the board or members of the public of this witness? Okay, you may call your next witness, Mr. Gashin. David?
Sir, could you raise your right hand, please, with regard to this application, you swear the testimony or you're attempting to prove the truth?
I do.
State your name and spell your last name, please.
I'm Anman Sedra, last name Sedra, S-E-D-R-A.
Could you spell your first name, please?
Y-Y-Man.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Sedra, what is your business address?
Uh, 181 Ega Rock Avenue, Rosemont, New Jersey.
And your occupation?
Licensed architect.
How long practicing in the field of architecture?
Uh, 14 years as out of professional license and 3 years with a professional license.
So you are now a licensed architect to the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
And have you testified before these four zoning boards and planning boards?
Yes, I did.
Were accepted as an expert on each and every occasion?
Yes.
Have you testified before Bellville Board?
Yes, I did.
Any other towns in the area?
Yes, um, Stratford, Lincoln City, Maine.
Which is acceptable in the schedule. Thank you. So, Mr. Sedra, you've been accepted as an expert in the field of architecture. We engaged to prepare the architectural plans to the proposed building.
Yes, I did, uh, the architectural plans.
And would you describe the existing structure on the site?
Sure, I just want to bring my words.
Please. Should we mark these all now or do you want them as?
How many exhibits do you?
I have about eight, eight sheets.
Let's go through them one at a time, yeah. You gotta explain briefly what it is, what is that particular?
Should I mark it or not mark it?
Not yet.
What is? Uh, this is the existing site layout.
So that would be what?
A7.
A7. Now, do you want to go through the other seven right now and get them on, in, in as evidence?
Sure.
Okay, take your next word, please, and briefly what is it?
The next one is the proposed site layout.
Okay, then mark that as A8.
Is the parking garage, the two levels.
A9. And what is that?
This is the two-story above the parking garages.
And you said those are the stories above the parking garage, right?
This is a 3D that shows.
Gotta speak a little louder.
A 3D that shows the front of the building. I like to use, after this one, I like to use one of the black and white that shows the height of the building, so I can explain the height of the building, so I'm gonna mark this one.
Do we have that?
I think we do actually have that.
We don't need to mark that?
I don't have to mark that one.
No, no, just refer to whatever it's on our.
On the sheet.
Our, our sheet, yes.
And after that, this one, I have also this one that shows the Academy Street view, which is the, the new building next to the adjacent buildings. I'm gonna mark this.
That's 12.
This is, yeah, this one is the Rutgers Street view. And this one is a colored, colored sheet for the elevations, which, which you have as well, but you have black and white.
Okay.
So I'll do this thing.
Sir, you may want to come up and sit in the closer seats, you can see this better, because that, this is in relation to the question you were asking before.
So I'm gonna start with explaining the existing site. First, I'm gonna start with defining the north arrow as it's shown here in the bottom of the beige, so the top of the beige is the north. The existing site consists of the existing church building here in the center of the page and on the eastern side here, we have the, the service building attached to the existing church building. The existing church building has two entrances, one from Academy Street and one from Rutgers Court. And on the eastern side here also, we have 17 parking spots.
Can I ask a question before you go on? What part, this is a current picture, correct?
This is, yeah.
He's describing the existing site. I know that, that's why I'm asking, gonna ask this question, what part is going to be demolished?
The part that's going to be demolished, a portion of the service building, which is this part, is gonna get demolished and also.
And that will add more parking spaces?
Correct, that's where we have the more parking spaces. And also the church owns the four houses on the west side here, the church owns the, these four houses. And, and we are demolishing these three houses.
And four, three, and four houses stay?
The four, four houses stays. Um, and the total demolished, I have this number also, the total demolished area for the service building and the three houses, about 8,602 square feet.
Okay, would you review the changes that will be made to the site?
The changes that will be made to the site, as I said, we're demolishing the service building on the eastern side, portion of it, not the whole building. And this is exactly what's gonna happen, the service building is gone. And we're, we're doing the parking as she explained, we have 33 parking spots here. And on this side, we're demolishing the three houses and we're gonna build the Coptic U Center in the place of the three houses.
And then would you describe the proposed new building? And just tell us which exhibit you're referring to when we do that.
I'm referring to, I'm gonna start with this A9, which is, A9 shows the parking garage, the two-story, but I'm gonna explain, I'm just gonna give some more information about the new building. So the new building is four-story building, we have three stories above the, above the ground and one story under the ground. This building consists of two-story parking and then another two-story for the building, for the church service and activities. So here we see the two, two-story parking, as she explained, we have two ramps, one for going to the lower-level parking, one, one to the upper-level parking. I'm not gonna go in this anymore because she did a good job with it. I just wanna explain the egress to this building. We have three means of egress, we have one on the northern side, we have a set of stairs that goes through the building on the north side, which is Academy Street side. We have another means of egress on the eastern side, which is close from the existing church building. And it's linked to the existing church building with a small vestibule. And, and, and this small vestibule, it will be used after Mass on Sunday, so people can come from, from the church, from the main church, to the building, through this vestibule. And also we have elevator shaft right next to this stair. So we have, we have also another set of stairs on the southern side of the building. So the, as I said, we have three means of egress to the building, through these stairs, we have three stairs. And every parking level has 36, 36 parking spots.
Would you describe, I think that's been explained to parking, I think you should describe the first floor of the new building.
Sure. So if we go to the next sheet, 77, which is A10. A10, here we have the first, the first floor level above the parking. And this level has 14 Sunday school rooms with different sizes, as this was the main need for, for the building, because they don't have enough Sunday school rooms. So we have 14 different-sized Sunday school rooms, some of these rooms bigger than the other and some of these rooms also can be used for meetings. And also in this level, we have the cafeteria, which they will be using, this cafeteria after the church mass, because they like to provide like a meal for the congregation after, after church. So we have the cafeteria, we have a commercial kitchen adjacent to the cafeteria that will be used to service the cafeteria. Also, we have three administration offices in this floor and a bookroom. Looking more, we have also a sprinkler, electric room and mechanical room, we have a small, we have a, a storage room. And also we have all required bathrooms, including also the, the accessible, handicap accessible bathrooms in schools. Which is, this is a big plus for this building, because the existing buildings, they don't really have any handicap accessible bathrooms. And most of the, most of the spaces, they're not handicap accessible in regards to hallway or the doors. And that's the first floor of the, of the building. Moving to the second floor, we, this second floor contains two main sections, which is the first, first one is the sanctuary, we have a sanctuary on the southern side of the building. And also on the northern side, we have a basketball court, this is the two main sections. And then we have the three, three priest rooms here on the west side, on, on the east side of the building, we have couple of storage rooms. And also we have the, again, we have the same layout bathroom that we have in the lower, in the lower level.
And are they accessible?
And they have accessible bathrooms.
And would you describe the proposed, proposed exterior of the new building?
I'm gonna start with this one, but I'm gonna move to the black and white one to show, show the house. So this one, it's a rendering for the front of the building, it shows a view from the front on the west side of the building. And I just wanna explain from where we, we came up with this design, coptic architecture has some similarity to Roman Basilica style with some differences. But regarding like the coptic architecture, they're famous with the round arches, sometimes they, they use also Gothic arches. Also famous with the big opening windows, like the big, big openings. Another, another thing, the famous ways, multiple façades, meaning they use different material at the base of the building and the top of the building. As we see here, we have brick at the base and stucco on top. Also, another thing is, is, is the coptic cross is, it's a, it's something that also related to the coptic architecture. Coptic cross and also they're also known with the domes in some of the churches. So this rendering, I'm gonna move to the next one, which is the one that, which is a black and white sheet that shows the heights of the building.
Identify by exhibit number also if you would.
Sure. Do you mind just holding that up for a second? The one that you have there, just picking it up. Thank you. Okay, I found this one, which is A oh five. Actually, I wanna get the front one, so let's get the next. Oh, it's actually right there. Okay, so this one here, which is A oh four. This one shows two elevation, which is the north elevation, Academy Street side, and the west elevation. I just wanna explain the height of the building, so we know. The first level parking, we have a nine-foot-high parking. And then the floor system, two-feet floor system. And then the next level parking is nine feet. Above that, we have another two-feet floor system. The floor above that is nine foot eight. And then we have three-foot floor system for that, for a reason, for a structural reason, as per my study with the structural engineer. And then the basketball court height is twenty feet. As we know, basketball courts, they're high, they're high, they need some height. So we have twenty feet. And then the roof system is about three feet. That would give us the maximum building height from average grade is fifty-two feet. As I said, the building material that we're using, we're using brick veneer at the bottom to match the existing structure. And we're using stucco finish at the top with aluminum windows and EFA trim for those windows. This building is a flat-roofed building. It's a flat-roofed building. We have also a dome above the sanctuary. And the building height from Academy Street is fifty-two feet from average grade. But from Rutgers Court is forty-four feet from average grade, because as, you know, with the basketball court is higher, the height of the basketball court is higher than the sanctuary side. So I had to strip it down on Rutgers Court. So the height is forty-four feet. That's this one. We're gonna show also a comparison. For, this one shows a comparison between the Coptic Youth Center and the next-door house, which is owned by the church. And this is, and here is the existing church. This rendering was based on the actual heights of things. So that's how it looks.
Excuse me, what exhibit is that? What exhibit is that?
A twelve.
A twelve, thank you.
The next one, which is A thirteen, is the Rutgers Street view. And this shows the church, the main church, the new building and the next door.
Is there any signage proposed on the structure?
Yes, we are proposing only one sign on Academy Street, which is this sign that we see here. And we're also proposing a gooseneck lighting, pre-gooseneck lighting and other stuff.
And have you had any opportunity to review Mr. Harris's report?
Yes, I did.
And do you have any comments with regard to that report? No.
No comments.
And no further questions in his witness, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any questions by members of the board?
I guess I'll start.
Go ahead.
Can we go back to, I think it's A thirteen, the exhibit right after this one? I just want to confirm something. It seems that where the parking deck is located, I have my little handy laser pointer right here. This is an ingress or egress for cars to get out of that level of the garage onto Rutgers Court?
No, actually, this is just an opening and just to get some light.
Just to get lighter air, okay. All right, I wasn't sure about that, because it looked like on the plans that this was going to be a possible additional entrance or exit to the garage, but that is not-
No, there's a parking spot right in front of that.
So on our plan, on the new plans, it appears that that area has been opened. I think I'm reading it correctly, it looks like that particular area is devoid of any parking. So that's why I was concerned if that was going to be another-
Actually, we didn't change this part in the plan, so what you have is kind of like what I submitted. And also, it shows a park, two parking spots, if I'm not mistaken, in front of that court.
Can we go to exhibit A twelve? I appreciate the modeling here. I asked about this at the last meeting, I believe. You said it would be forthcoming. I just wanna confirm one thing. This house that is next door, that's one forty-nine Academy Street, I believe? Is the address for this?
That's correct, yes.
One forty-nine, all right. And that happens to also be owned by the Coptic Church, all right? So that's another property that the church is electing not to use as part of this project, but it does belong to the Coptic Church, all right? Thank you.
Any other questions by members of the board? I have a, I saw on the plans here on C dash three point zero that on Rutgers Court, there's gonna be a sign mounted on the building that says, "No street traffic allowed there." Is that a new sign that's being put up?
Where is it?
This is on the plan C dash three point up.
Yes, that's a new sign.
That's a new sign? If you can mention any other sign, that's why I'm saying.
That's, yeah.
That's on the engineering plan, I believe.
Yeah, but I mean, they jive, the two of them?
Yes, but it's a traffic sign, so it's included in the website.
No, I understand. No, but he said no other sign was being put up.
No other site identification.
Sign refers to the name of the church. Not sign of direction, no through traffic.
It's being put behind the building, that's what I'm saying. It's not a street sign on the building.
It's not a sign regarding advertising, the name of the church.
Any other questions by members of the board? Do you have any questions, Mr. Malo?
No.
Oh, okay. Mr. Viall, you're next.
Thank you, you're welcome. So looking at this rendering, this is from the high end of Academy Street, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Do you have any renderings from the lower elevations? So it'd appear, the building itself would appear higher from the lower end, is that correct?
From the lower end, yes.
And did you look at whether there will be any shadows from this building to any other adjacent properties?
No, but- But the adjacent two properties, they're owned by the church.
Well, one side is owned, but those sides are owned, but the other side, I believe, not.
Wait, 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 you say adjacent two properties?
I mean, this property is owned by the church and this one too, is the church building.
Oh, that, okay. But the other way, on the back of Rutgers Court, that's not, the adjacent properties are not owned by the church.
Correct.
And can you just look at whether there will be shadows on those properties?
We didn't do a shadow studies.
Going back to the average, or the height of the building, can you pull the elevations again, please? You said you use the average height of the building to get the fifty-two feet height?
Average grade.
Did that use, did that factor in the roof features at the top?
Yes, that's the highest point on everything.
What is the highest point from the lowest grade to the top of the roof?
From the lowest grade to the top of the roof? I think another five feet, so fifty-two, fifty-seven, about fifty-seven feet.
Thank you. And can you bring up the floor plans, please? A ten. Can you point out what was considered the seating area that was used to calculate the parking requirements?
Actually, the seating area, it was not only lying on the new building, it was also related to the existing church. But the part that relates to the new building is the sanctuary, where we have the seating. The area of the seating that we provided.
So that is the only area that was used for seating area?
In the new building, yes, but we used the seating in the existing church.
Just for the, I'm talking, just for the youth center, only, the parking requirement, correct?
Only the sanctuary, yes, it was used toward the seating.
And so the rooms, the schoolrooms, were not used at all?
Correct, because it will not be used during church.
I'm sorry, just the, yes or no, it was not used at all, just the seating?
Correct, yeah, it was not used.
Okay. Can you, if you don't mind humor-ing me, can you state, testify to the size of the rooms and the basketball court and the cafeteria, and what sizes those actually are? So basically, all the areas that weren't used in the calculation for seating area, if you don't mind going through the floor plans and stating the sizes for each?
Sure, the Sunday school rooms, the size of all the rooms is four thousand six hundred and forty-four square feet.
I'm sorry, four thousand?
Six hundred and forty-four.
And that was combined of all the rooms?
That's all the Sunday school rooms.
The cafeteria?
Cafeteria is three thousand one ninety-two square feet.
The basketball court?
The basketball court is seven thousand two hundred and fifteen. And the sanctuary is three thousand one thirty-six, but that's the area of the whole space, not the ceiling.
The sanctuary total space is how much?
Three thousand one thirty-six.
And were there, are there any other rooms that you haven't mentioned, such as the offices that you did?
Yeah, the offices are small spaces, but I can give you a number for those. Yeah, the three offices is one twenty-six each, so three times one twenty-six. And the bookroom is two fifty-nine square feet. Bathrooms is two rooms, each room is two twenty-six square feet.
And to be clear, the basketball court, that's not going to be used as part of, it's ancillary to the church, you're not having services in a basketball court.
No.
And you're not having it in the schoolrooms, these are all ancillary uses, correct?
Correct.
And they did not, okay, you didn't use those rooms when you used the so-called seating area?
Correct, we're not counting those rooms because they're not gonna be used.
Okay, and are there any other rooms that weren't mentioned? I believe there were-
We have a couple of storage rooms, and they're here on the second floor. Give you the size of the storage room.
Thank you.
One is three twenty-four square feet. And the next storage room is a little bit smaller, three hundred and ten square feet. We have also the priest's room, we have three of those. We range from two hundred and ten to the next one is three hundred, and the last room. One is seven hundred square feet.
Okay, are there any other rooms that would be, what you would consider net square footage that wasn't seating area? Maybe, did you include the kitchen in that cafe calculation or was that-
I'll give you the kitchen. The kitchen is, I have the kitchen, yeah. Six hundred seventy-one square feet.
Six seventy-one?
Yes, correct. And then I have another storage room, I think, that's the only one, the only room that's, I'm gonna give you a number for, it's three hundred and ten square feet.
Okay, are there any other rooms that we haven't mentioned that would be really net square footage that wasn't included in that seating area?
I gave you the administration's office offices, right?
Yeah, the three offices and the bookroom next to it.
So we have that. I think the only thing missing is another small storage room, which is fifteen feet by nine, it's one twenty-six square feet.
Okay, and what was that seating area for the sanctuary?
The seating area that we used. So the seating area for the sanctuary, two thousand two hundred and thirty-three square feet.
Two thousand three hundred and thirty-three three square feet. So the total of the total of the net square footage that you had mentioned appears to be about twenty-one thousand six hundred and seventy-one square feet. And only two thousand two hundred and thirty-three square feet was used for the parking calculation, because that's the seating area in the sanctuary.
Correct.
And all of the other uses are not actually being used for what you direct church services. These are all ancillary rooms, cafe and basketball.
Correct.
Thank you, I have no further questions.
Any additional questions by members of the board right now? No?
I do, I do.
You do, yeah.
Just to follow up on Mr. Viall's question. The set, the floor plan for the sanctuary area and the basketball court, according to my measurements, the basketball court is not a regulation court. It's a slightly undersized court.
It's undersized.
The wall that separates your sanctuary area from the basketball court, this wall here, is that a rigid wall or is this a flexible partition that could be opened to expand the sanctuary area?
No, it's a rigid wall. And also, the, by looking at the sanctuary, we have the altar is on this side.
Okay.
And the viewer, they will be on that side, even if this wall gets open. I mean, it's not possible to have a dual
All right, thank you.
configuration.
I just wanted, I'm sorry, I just had one question. The size you gave for the basketball court, did that include all of those little?
That's, yes, that's the whole.
It included everything, okay, thank you.
To go back to exhibit A twelve. This was like one of the 3D renderings for the site. This was like one of the 3D renderings for the site. Right, there was earlier testimony that the house depicted in this building, that's 149 Academy Street, which is also owned by the church, they've elected not to...
Objection, obviously, this is a professional, he wouldn't know what the church has elected to do or not to do.
Well, I didn't finish my sentence, they've elected not to, to use this other building as part of...
Again, he, he would not know what they elected or didn't they elect, but it's not a part of this application.
I was anticipating you would be objecting to this question, but I was curious to know what the, the church is intending to do with, with that house, is that going to be staff?
Yeah.
Housing for staff?
That, he wouldn't know, he wouldn't know that.
Well, if, if anyone involved with this application could tell us that that house...
It would have to be, it would have to be the priest. He's the only one who would know what they're gonna do to the building. It's not part of the application, he's not familiar with that building.
Perhaps he would be able to enlighten us, would be willing to tell us if that's going to be used for, for the housing of staff.
Not a part of his application.
I realize that, but...
Just a general question.
It does seem to be part of the overall campus for the church, it's one of their properties, I'm just naturally curious why, what their plan is to use that building, is it going to be rental spacious?
Mr. Viall, it's not part of this application.
I realize that, but it's just again a general question as to what, what the church is planning to do with, with the property. If you could humor me, I would just like to know what... You may not have a legal, you may not be compelled legally to answer that, but if you would voluntarily submit that information, I would appreciate it.
I don't know, and I didn't ask.
Would your, would your client...
Go ahead, Mr., I'll let, I'll let Mr. Borrego.
No, it just seemed like a harmless, we know it's not part of the application, it just seemed like a harmless question.
You gotta remember, it, it was brought in, the testimony, that they owned four houses. I didn't bring that in, your witness brought that in.
That's true.
So that opens up the door. I'm sorry, and it's a harmless question. So if you want the priest to give an answer, I have no problem, I know he can, maybe the priest can, but the thing is...
We have another hearing, and I'll talk to my client and see what they have in mind.
Okay, it's up to you, it's up to you. Any other question on this? It's enough, now, I, go ahead, I love when you...
On your rendering, the four, the colored four, can you show us what area you're considering the seating area in the parking calculations?
Uh, it's not actually shown on this rendering, but maybe next time I can, yeah, get some...
Okay, so what you, from, from, what you testified to, I'm assuming that when everyone's in the sanctuary, no one's anywhere else in that building, is that correct? None of the other rooms are being used?
Yeah, but the parking wasn't only counted based on the sanctuary.
No, it was on the youth, on the youth center also, in the, uh...
The main church.
The main church. But what I'm saying, what I'm saying is when they're having a service, everybody's in that sanctuary.
Correct, and either the sanctuary or the main church, and that's it. They don't, the Sunday school class is empty, cafeteria is empty, everything, we're empty.
So what you're saying is, because I, I've gone to churches or schools where there are multiple things going on at the same time, and they have multiple masses, and while they're having multiple mass, possibly the classrooms will be used, but your testimony is they're not gonna have anything going on in the classrooms when the church is in utilization.
Yes, this is how it's been.
Okay.
This is how they do the provision.
Can you put up one of the others, bring the signs up, not the one in the back, the ones that you had on the floor, because there, there's, I want the Rutgers street, please.
The Rutgers, the Rutgers street.
Okay. So on the bottom left, that is a doorway that's going in to the garage?
This one?
Either one, what are they?
This or this, no, they're just opening, just to get light.
So nobody can drive in there?
No.
Okay.
But we have a gate for emergency here.
You have a gate for emergency, for a vehicle to go in?
Yes.
Okay, because I, I noticed it on, on the map, on the plan, and it says 10, 10.3 feet wide. That's, you can fit a vehicle in there.
Small ones, yes.
Small, yes.
That was the question I had asked earlier, that was now another exit from the bottom garage level? He said no, it was just, it was just a light mirror.
Let me just say, once, one thing about this, this opening, uh, from this opening to the, to the rear yard, that is only 10 feet, so you don't really have enough turn in just to take a vehicle and turn around with it from here, from this one.
I just wanna say...
My engineer has a comment with regard to that, if that's okay? I have no problem, no, she can just...
There's a set of concrete steps that we are providing at the back of this building that will essentially prohibit a car from making the left into that, into that area.
Do you have it on your sites?
Yeah, I have it on that site.
Well, the steps, the steps from what I'm, I'm being told or being shown here on your map is the steps that are going into the building on the right, not going into the garage, has you no steps going in the garage?
No, I'm just, if you look at sheet C-3.0...
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at.
So, my, my point is that those steps, these steps protrude out far enough from the existing building that a car would not be able to make that left-hand turn.
Yeah, actually, the steps is not shown in the rendering, but it does exist.
So, and there's, there's a gate there to block anyone from walking to the back of the, through that, through that back entrance to the garage, but a vehicle would not be able to make that left and get into the garage.
So it says here, the wording here is paved driveway. This is on your date, and then there is a gate that you can't go further in, but that doesn't mean you can't go into the garage.
Wait, I don't think a car would be able to get past these concrete stairs.
Okay, you're talking about over here? It says game here? Which way is the gate? Because I see, I see, I see a, a double gate, and then I see an, oh, this is another gate here, okay, so you can't go in the driveway, all right, further in, okay, I'm satisfied.
I think the paved driveway is actually for the apartment building next door.
Yeah, so that's existing.
Oh, it's not part of the church, okay. Okay. All right, there's the delay. Any other questions by members of the board? Any questions of the witness by members of the public? Come on up, sir, come on up. Who wants to come up first, I don't care.
Yes, sir, can you bring up the, over, looking down at the site?
Just for the record, would you, then you could just... Could you use the mic, because we can't hear you?
Is it on?
Yeah, it's on.
Don't press the button.
We actually turned it off, let's leave it on.
That's on, leave the red light on.
It's on?
Yeah.
Singing so...
Okay, you want to use this?
Yes, yes.
Would you like to see the proposed or the existing site?
The proposed. All right, can you show me what portions of that site is, you're considering open space?
Well, all, all the green area is considered open space.
All right, so there's the small areas around the building, from the building, down the alleys, and so forth, that's what you're considering open space, okay.
Yes, sir, you wanted to come up and ask a question.
Alex, that's about 144 Academy Street. Can we go back to the, uh...
You got, you can't hear you, you're going away from the mic.
Can we go back to where the new building was?
The what?
Behind that?
The one behind that?
There's another one behind that.
The 112.
That, that blue building, 149, do you know how tall that is, the highest point?
Uh, the, the highest point to this building from the, from the curb, I have the number. This building is 44 feet and 6 inches from the highest point to the curb.
And the new building is how high?
The new building is 52 feet high, but from average grade.
Any other questions by members of the board, follow up?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Viall.
So, to the first rendering that you put up, sort of, that the proposed, what the flyer...
The existing site?
Yes, the existing.
So, is it?
Yeah, no, I, I can see from the...
Wait, 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 you can't proceed unless Gavin's back. You know what, why don't we have, uh, why don't we have a recess for about 10 minutes, okay? Because I don't like it when a member steps out, and you'll let me know, you'll let me know. Mr. Gashion, the zoning board of adjustments, meeting for July 10, 2019, well, is now back in session. Was there any other questions that were being asked? Where do we leave off? You were asking, Manny was asking questions.
So, I wanted to ask you, on the east side of the property, the way it currently is right now, there's a fence on the eastern side of the parking lot that exists there now.
Yes, this fence.
And then there is, I believe, some property between the fence and the property line of the property to the east of it. All right, so what you just touched before, on the eastern side, that's your, that's your southern side, so...
The eastern side, here is the library.
Excuse me?
This is the library here on the...
Right, that's, that's what I'm talking about. That area you're right, right now is full of vegetation, overgrown vegetation. Uh, with the proposed, uh, development that they're gonna do, are they gonna extend the fence from where it is now into that vegetation?
Yes, actually, and also, not only the fence, I think we need also a retainer, some sort of retainer that carries this side, and that's also shown, I think, in the side, side drawing. There is a retaining wall.
Right.
Can, if you're interested in retaining walls, refer to the engineer answer, she's here and ready to answer. Does Lopez begin specifically your question of this candidate?
On sheet C-3.0?
Yeah, so I'm referring to the eastern side of, of the property lot.
Correct.
Right? Right next to the library. Between the two properties, there is overgrown vegetation. And then you have the, the fence that is currently there now at the end of the parking lot, on the eastern side of it. Is, is that fence, when the new parking lot is done, is gonna be extended closer to the property line of the, the library? And is that area right, um, gonna be maintained as it isn't now? That's my question.
So, um, some of that growth is actually on the library's property, and there's a fence, lots of the library's property?
This is the property that belongs to them.
Right, so our, our site plan shows a retaining wall that goes the entire length along the eastern, and above that retaining wall, there will be a new fence. So there's a new fence proposed along the entire length of the eastern side of the property.
And will there, will there be any landscape beyond that retaining wall?
No.
No.
Uh, there will be, on the high side, on the, on the church's side, there will be some landscape bang in the islands here. And on the low side, there is an existing hedgerow between the property and the church that we want to keep in place on the low side of the retaining wall.
Okay, so currently, right now, there's a lot of vegetation in there, that's gonna be all taken out?
Yeah, it's gonna be, uh, pre, preconfigured, replaced, yeah.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, any more questions by members of the board? Any more questions by yourself? Any more questions by members of the public? Yes, sir, come on up, state your name and address and...
I'm Michael McCarty, I live at 204 Park Road. I just wanted to see, just on the elevation drawing with the black and white, there's a benchmark height for like the average height of the surrounding buildings?
Uh, existing buildings?
Just like the average height for buildings on the block? Or like, uh, because this isn't shown in context at any point?
Well, the only building that I measured the height, which is the building that was owned by the church, uh, which is still owned by the church, uh, which is 149 Academy, that's the only one I measured on the block. Uh, so I, I can't give you an answer.
And just tell them what that one is, if you would.
Uh, this building was 44 feet, 6 inches, from the curb to the highest point of the roof, that's the only one I measured.
Any other questions by members of the public? No further questions by members of the board, follow up, nothing? Okay, any other witnesses?
Mine, I just checked my phone, my witnesses cannot make it, no further witnesses.
Well, Mr. Gashion, we just called it up. Do you want to proceed with your next case?
I do not, in concert with the discussion with Mr. DiLorenzo, he thought there were just too many changes to be able to intelligently present the application tonight.
You mean the new changes that were approved last night?
Yes.
Because I asked him to go over everything.
So, I did have my witness and my witness is here, I just told him...
There's no use to proceed, and then maybe you didn't have to come before us, or you had less to prove before.
He thinks there's substantial differences.
Good. All right, so ZB 2019-08, uh, that is an applicant seeking approval to legalize an existing one-bedroom, am I correct?
That's right.
One-bedroom apartment within multi-family apartment building, we're told.
Total of nine.
Of nine apartment units at 19 Van Rensselaer Street, Castle Apartments LLC. That case will be adjourned to August 1st, 2019. There will be no further notices in the mail or in the newspaper, for anybody who's interested in that. Okay, uh, we have a resolution to be memorialized.
Oh, Mr. Jim, what was our case adjourned to?
Oh, no, your case is Carrington first.
Just one question. Just why we just announced that?
Oh, yes, anybody who's in the audience about the case we're on, this case is now going to continue on the 1st of August, 2019. It'll be the first case on the agenda, and there'll be no further notices in the newspaper or in the mail.
And that's at 7:00 p.m.?
And that's at 7:00 p.m.
Gashion, how are we on time?
I wait in time. Till the next regularly scheduled meeting, let's go.
Are you writing the resolution?
Yes.
A resolution of legalization, matter of Mario Juan, 114, act 131, and the application number FIBA 2019-07. Bennett, Russell, Lopez, Voto, Jellid, Bla, and others.
Yes. Motion to adjourn? All in favor?